I call this special meeting of the San Carlos City Council to order. We will take public comment for items not on the posted agenda. Seeing no public comment, we will start with new business. Item 3A, study session on California High Speed Rail, Caltrain High Speed Rail blended operations and Caltrain electrification. Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I have a PowerPoint for you tonight, and what I'm going to try to do is show you a lot of visuals that you, some of which you may have seen and some of which you may not have seen, in the interest of kind of giving you a big picture, and I'll go through these relatively quickly so we can save most of the time for discussion. So, a little history, and you know some of this, or some of you do. In 2008, the voters passed Proposition 1A, which is a $9.95 billion bond funding to do high speed rail in the future. This was for a project that would ultimately go from Sacramento to San Diego. In 2009, Caltrain and High Speed Rail came to an agreement to share the Caltrain right-of-way with four tracks, two for Caltrain and two for High Speed Rail. Caltrain officials at the time called electrification of Caltrain the key to Caltrain's future. City council actions, this is a summary of the council's actions to date since the start of the project. As of tonight's meeting, you will have now met 10 times on this topic, most of which were in 2009 and 10. This is now the fourth time this year. San Carlos participation, this is just some of the things that we've done since 2009. During the joint High Speed Rail/Caltrain work in 2009 and 10, we participated in monthly office hour meetings at the staff level. Public works and myself participated in what was called the Staff Technical Working Group. That group no longer exists. And council liaison at the time, Omar Maad, participated in the so-called Policy Working Group from '09 and '10, and that group is also no longer meeting. During this process, we also developed an overhead alternative alignment that we talked about earlier in January, that was developed during the office hour meetings. And during that process, we also did a number of outreach processes, which included workshops at both the Caltrain-Samtrans Building in San Carlos and the library community rooms. We made multiple presentations to the Chamber of Commerce and the Harbor Industrial Area. We made presentations at both Hot Harvest Nights and the Art and Wine Fair, among other community events. In May 2010, as we talked about, again, some of this is review, we sent a letter to High Speed Rail before the project was put on hold, which talked about some of our key points, and I won't run through these because these are in your packet, but these are some of the key points from San Carlos in the initial project. And we also have talked in the past about the alternate overhead four-track design, which was a tweaking of the overhead approach and would allow all four of the projects, which earlier council set as priorities, would allow within the right-of-way to accommodate the historic train station, Old County Road, East Side Connect, and the Transit Village. And more recently, as the council knows, we have forwarded this letter to both High Speed Rail and Caltrain within the last 60 days. So, High Speed Rail, let's talk a little bit about the project proper, and again, this is the part some of you may not have seen before, but I think as we look at this, this is like a jigsaw puzzle. I think this will help you understand. High Speed Rail, basically, in theory, would be built in five steps. And the first step that you've heard a lot about lately is the so-called Central Valley piece, or Merced to Bakersfield. It is also known as the Initial Construction Section, or in the lingo, the ICS. It is the backbone of the High Speed Rail system. It can also be used along with the existing Amtrak service in the San Joaquin Valley to speeds up to 110 miles an hour. It is, that particular service is currently used by a million passengers. If you integrate this leg into the existing Amtrak service, you're going to be able to reduce travel time in that portion of the state by 45 minutes. Of perhaps additional significance is this segment, which goes from Merced to Bakersfield, costs $6 billion. It is the lowest-cost segment in High Speed Rail, and there are $2 billion roughly of Recovery Act funds that came to the state two years ago that must be used, or construction must start by September of this year for that money to stay in the state. And the other $4 billion, $3 to $4 billion could come out of that $9 billion, as we talked about earlier. This decision will come relatively quickly. If the state matching money is to be made available, it would have to be included in the upcoming 2012-13 state budget, which is targeted to be adopted this June, it's only a couple of months away. And if this funding is made available, this segment is scheduled to be constructed from September 2012 and completed five years later in 2017. I wanted to put this slide up just because you've probably heard some of this in news reports, but this is a common slide. You'll see if you go to High Speed Rail briefings, they point out the job creation effect of this project, particularly in the valley, for those of you, some of you may know. The unemployment rate in the valley remains at over 20%. And so while this area is recovering here in Silicon Valley quite nicely job-wise, the valley is not. And so when you talk about $6 billion of investment starting in September and 100,000 jobs, you certainly get their attention in a big hurry. So, step two. Step two is what's called the Initial Operating Section, the IOS, and there are two of them. The IOS South goes from Bakersfield to Palmdale, which is this piece right down here. Whoops, let me go back a step. And the other segment, which we'll show you in a minute, is the IOS North, which goes from Merced to San Jose. In step two, High Speed Rail would build one of these two IOS segments. For purposes of this presentation, and I'm presenting it just the way High Speed Rail would present it if they were here, they typically show the IOS South first, but it is not yet clear in this time period from 2015 to 2021 which of the two IOS segments would be built. You'll notice that this segment costs $27.2 billion, and this is the first of several segments we'll show you now that is not yet funded. Step three would then be the other IOS segment. This would be IOS North, most likely from Merced to San Jose. It's also known as Beta Basin in some reports, and it's this piece here. And at step three, what you have is you have a High Speed Rail system that would extend from San Jose in the north to the San Fernando Valley in the south. And again, this project would cost an additional $21 billion, scheduled from 2021 to 2026, also not funded. Then we have step four. And step four originally was a four-track system from both San Jose to San Francisco and San Fernando Valley into Anaheim. However, as you know from recent coverage, there's talk about the so-called blended option. And in the blended option, you would use two tracks rather than four, and as we note in the slide, that would cut $20 billion off the cost of the project. So the cost of this phase, step four, without the four tracks, now there are just two tracks, has gone from $43 billion to $23 billion. This would be constructed, started in 2026 to 2030. It is also not funded at the moment, and perhaps most important for one of our later discussions, this is the point at which the passing tracks would be needed, some 14 years from now. And then finally, there's talk about potentially having a fifth step. And two things could happen at the fifth step. You could either have four tracks, go from two to four tracks from San Francisco all the way to Anaheim, or you could add extensions from Merced to Sacramento and from Anaheim to San Diego, and that's not costed. But the four-track segment is costed, and that's another $20 billion, also not funded. And that, if you did all five steps, you'd have the system completed by the year 2033. This slide here actually shows you the financing, and again, I think this is very helpful to understand in terms of how much money is available and how much money would be needed to complete the entire system. The first segment, the famous $6 billion that we talked about, could be funded if the state legislature this summer passes the $3 to $4 billion necessary in the budget out of the initial $9.95. The other segments you see layered up there, IOS South, IOS North, Phase One Blended, Full Phase One, are all not funded. So let's talk a little bit now about the blended operation and early investments that you've been hearing a lot about just in the last couple of weeks. Caltrain proposed, and later three local politicians, Joe Semidi and Rich Gordon and Anna Eshu endorsed, the concept of blended operations. And after that occurred in this area, the Los Angeles cities then turned around, and they also now have done blended operations, not surprisingly, kind of copied what we've done here. The idea is to use the existing two tracks along the Caltrain right-of-way with High Speed Rail to share it, in effect. And it also would allow for electrified Caltrain. And if you notice the image on the left, that's a picture of the proposed electrified Caltrain vehicles, the so-called EMUs. In such a scenario, the first step would be to increase Caltrain from five to six trains per hour per direction and to move from a diesel-based system to an electrified system, and then at a later date, to then add High Speed Rail, which could either be two additional tracks to go eight trains an hour per direction, which would not require passing tracks, or to go a full 10 trains per hour per direction, which would require passing tracks. And as I note here in the slide, if this was used in both San Francisco and LA, it would cut the costs of the project by $20 billion. It would also move up the timing of the project. And this is the current focus that we're seeing both in Northern and Southern California. And as I note, as I mentioned earlier, a big question for us and other communities is when do the passing tracks kick in? Is it 2026? Is it sooner, is it later? There's also a question, and you'll see this as we get into some of the comments from some of our neighboring cities, about when will there be funding for grade-crossing money? Because unlike San Carlos, where all of the streets are grade-separated, that is not true in many of our neighboring cities. This is a slide that shows the Caltrain process in terms of planning for both electrification and shared systems. You'll notice that the box up here, Capacity Analysis, was completed at the end of last year. The service plan and the grade-crossing work is scheduled to be completed sometime between the summer and the fall of this year. And then after that, you see there's a series of steps, including the service plan options and the infrastructure planning. The infrastructure planning you'll see is key in a moment because some of the questions that we have asked are not scheduled to be answered until that point in the process. The Blended Operations Analysis, you will recall, was released late last year. There was a request for comment letters by January 15th. We came to your first meeting this year to put in our comment. We were one of three cities in the peninsula that commented, the others being Samatayau and Mountain View. No other cities commented in time for the comment period. And this talks about the findings, the fact that shared systems are doable. You can go from five to six trains with Caltrain, you can go up to eight without passing tracks and up to 10 with. And then it shows you the different passing track locations. Again, we've covered some of that. And you also may remember this table. Again, this is key in the discussion for grade crossings. You'll see that Belmont, Brisbane, and San Carlos do not need any grade crossings, and so the study about grade crossings probably will not be of a lot of interest to us. However, if you're Boiling Game, Redwood City, or Samatayau, that study will be obviously of heavy interest to you because you, all three of those cities have seven at-grade crossings. And as you increase the frequency of trains going through the crossings, you have the potential of making it harder to get in and out of those cities and also to increase east-west traffic congestion. Our comment letter, which we sent last month, you will recall, we issued, there are eight points, it's in the staff report, so I won't go through these, but these are the key points that we focused on, that we asked Caltrain staff to answer. As it turns out through coincidence this morning, the responses from Caltrain came in, and wasn't aware they were coming in today, or we might have delayed this presentation, but they did respond to the comments from the three cities. They also apparently got a response from the city of Belmont towards the end of last week, even though the responses were due a month and a half ago. It came in sort of a last-minute response. Some of the responses they issued in terms of our comments were that they will respond to our 2010 letter, Caltrain will, in the infrastructure phase, which is two steps away, so probably sometime in 2013 or later, will get a response. They will also respond to the passing track questions that we raised, again, in the infrastructure phase next year. And they also issued some responses to Councilmember Olbert's email that had been forwarded to them. Some of the other questions that came in from the other agencies that they responded to, they recognize that local traffic may be impacted as the number of trains increases, particularly if there are no grade crossings, and they'll address that in the studies. They will study all the passing track options. The initial results may come in the summer or fall of this year, more discussion next year. They'll discuss the need for grade crossings and the impact on freight. Okay, then we can talk a little bit about the bookends, also known as the early investments. The early investments are a proposal to take $1 billion for the San Francisco area and another billion dollars for the LA area, and to match it with so-called non-High Speed Rail money. The LA areas have already embraced this. They have a list of projects, and they have an agreement, so-called MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, completed, and that will be, that's being submitted to High Speed Rail as we speak. The San Francisco area agencies, including Caltrain and MTC, are working on a comparable list that is due in a couple of weeks, and that's one of the reasons that they've begun the outreach process that we've been talking about. The belief in Sacramento, if you talk to the governor or the legislators, is that if they were to, in addition to funding the Central Valley, provide a billion dollars in each of those two bookend areas, that they could provide jobs, they could reduce long-term Caltr, uh, High Speed Rail costs, because obviously you're moving up some of the early construction. And quite frankly, from staff's perspective, some of this, I think, has to do with gaining additional legislative support to get the funding for the Central Valley. And maybe a cynical observation on my part, but that's my guess. Of particular interest to this area, and in particular, some of the comments I've heard from council previously, is that of interest here is that if the bookend money was received in the peninsula, and if it was received with a draft list of projects Caltrain has provided, it would be enough money to electrify Caltrain within the next six to eight years, roughly. And as you can see, the process is, this list will go to MTC in the next couple of weeks, and then to High Speed Rail in April. And as I mentioned, we've had updates on this process in the last week or two. It's kind of like late breaking news at work. First with the, what they call the Staff Coordinating Council, the staff members along the peninsula who are working on this project with Caltrain, and then last Tuesday in San Carlos, and then there are additional presentations coming up. The criteria for these projects, it has to be located on the peninsula High Speed Rail segment. It has to support Caltrain modernization, things like electrification. It can't compromise the local planning process, and it has to have a 50-50 match of Prop 1A, High Speed Rail money and non-1A money. This is the table that Caltrain has issued to show the projects that they would propose for this early funding. It includes additional money for the so-called Advanced Signal System, which they are already working on putting in. It has $785 million for Caltrain electrification and another $440 million for the so-called electric vehicles, the EMUs as they call them, and then additional things such as access improvements, which are parking improvements, and improvements related to the San Jose Duradon Station. The Group Two improvements, which at this point there is no funding for, include things such as the San Francisco downtown extension, infrastructure upgrades, grade crossings, passing tracks, et cetera. I think there's a couple significant things in this slide. The first is, as you probably recall from the earlier slide, the total cost of blended systems in step four is $19 billion. Even if you front $2 billion of it now, you're still short, if you want to look at it that way, $17 billion. And that's the reason that all of this work is delayed to the future. And obviously, the item we've been focused on, the potential of passing tracks in San Carlos, first of all, there's a question of whether, you know, they need to be built at all, but if they do, this is again in the area of not funded. So it could be the case, if the Group One funding moves forward, that Caltrain electrification could be forward, funded in the short term, but the passing tracks may not. Caltrain electrification and the so-called Overhead Catenary System, or OCS, have a couple of artist rendering. And for those of you who haven't seen these before, it shows you what Caltrain electrification would look like in San Carlos. This is a typical at-grade section, and you can see that what essentially is being added here are the so-called catenary poles and then wires. There's a wire on either side, and then this wire in the center. Similarly, at the station, there would be cantilevers on either side at the platform. And again, this is just a rough artist rendering. If Caltrain electrification were to move forward, there'd obviously be a full environmental impact report prior to any project work. So in wrapping up, staff notes that, as we did in the report, that High Speed Rail and Caltrain are obviously continue to be interrelated projects. They share a lot of features, funding, timing, and we should continue to treat them as interrelated as we have. We recommend that San Carlos continue to be active in the project as we have since 2009, participate in all of the work, including the so-called bookends and early funding, continue to provide comment letters. And then we obviously want to continue to watch the funding and timing of the various project elements. We think it's interesting, in the last week, as I've been working with Caltrain staff, that it appears that while it will be possible to move up some elements through this bookend funding of two, up to $2 billion for this area, that it could allow for Caltrain electrification, but it probably will not allow for passing tracks. And that could mean that we may not see those for 10 or 15 years from now. So with that, be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. So the way we're going to run this is we're going to do questions from council. If there's any public comment, we'll do that after questions, and then, I don't know how much of a discussion you're really going to want, since it's a study session, and we also need to be wrapped up by seven. So we'll start with questions. Mr. Grokka, you want to start?
The only question I have is, what was not in the staff report was what the original cost for this project was as it was presented to voters in '07, '08, before Prop 1A was voted on. And the second question is, what was the original travel time that was also included in the Prop 1A language? I think it was in Prop 1A, it didn't talk about some of those cities you had on the map that Moore talked about, I believe, from Los Angeles to San Francisco, but...
That's the original route, yes.
San Francisco, from LA to San Francisco.
Mm-hmm.
And so, those are my two questions.
Okay. I don't have the information on the original price, but I can get that for the council.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grokka.
Time.
Pardon?
The time. There were two elements in the Prop 1A language. There was time from Los Angeles to San Francisco.
Oh, the travel time. Again, I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can get that for the council.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Grokka, Mr. Collins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, just one and possibly another question. I was doing a little informal research, light research, on this overhead catenary system, and it's really hard to pin down how tall the structures are exactly. That picture you had, what, how tall is the tallest pole, would you say?
That I don't know off the top of my head, but we can, we can get that for you.
Okay. And then there was, and I saw a couple of different kinds. One was one where there's sort of a structure down the middle, where there's overhead things going, going on both sides to the trains in each direction. And then there's one where there's the whole sort of framework, yeah, like, like that. But then there was another one I saw that had sort of had poles down the middle and things coming out.
Right. And actually, there's another one they call a headway, where at the station, there's kind of a frame, a hard frame that's all the way around. And actually, in my discussions earlier today with Caltrain staff, they indicated that at some of the stations along the route, they will use that headway, but in San Carlos, what they're looking at is this particular design where the cantilever would be on either side of the station.
Okay.
There's also, just so you know, Councilmember Collins, powering stations that are along the route. As it turns out, there are no powering stations in the current design for the San Carlos segment. However, there are powering stations in both Samatayau and Redwood City nearby, but not in our city. So I didn't show those, but we have those renderings as well.
All right. And what sort of footprint does this system, the support system, require? Would it be much outside the actual track structure?
Our understanding is that the catenaries are within the existing right-of-way, that they have.
All right. And I guess you're, we're all aware, we've been getting lots of emails and questions from residents and that sort of thing.
I've seen some of the questions, and actually, I think, as I indicated in the presentation, one of the key questions that we heard, the question of when will the city's 2010 letter get answered? We got an answer to that this morning, namely, it will be answered in the infrastructure planning phase by Caltrain, if it is not answered by High Speed Rail before. And based on what I've heard from High Speed Rail, since this segment is quote-unquote "on hold," my prediction is that the first answer to our letter will be from Caltrain.
Right. And then another one, I don't know if you can answer this tonight, you and I did have a brief conversation about it, and that is the, this business of protecting Old County Road from, from being impacted during the construction.
Right.
Can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah. Essentially, when we talked to HMTB, which are the Design Engineers for High Speed Rail, they indicated to us that if we end up with four tracks, or maybe even three, in other words, one or two of the passing tracks, that Old County Road will not permanently lose a lane if we use the alternate design, which at one point would have occurred even with, with the original overhead design. If you use one of the underground designs, you would definitely impact Old County Road. However, if you stay within two tracks, you're not going to impact Old County Road permanently, and anything that would happen along there, even in the wildest scenarios, would be just during temporary work on the catenaries. But since we have 20 feet of right-of-way between the Transit Village proposal and Caltrain, it seems likely that that would further minimize the impact if we stay with the two tracks. I mean, at this point, from the discussions I've had in the last couple of days, since the passing tracks now are not only not funded, but have been pushed out 15 years, it seems likely that some of the concerns about Old County Road during construction are not going to come to pass, since we're not talking about anything like adding a viaduct, removing the berm, or any of the things that potentially could result in some narrowing of the street during temporary construction. But at this point, it looks like that's still, that's some years in the distance.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you. First off, just a quick question as regards the letter that was sent from the East Side residents to the city today. Is staff planning on responding to that?
We certainly can. I saw it late this afternoon, but I'd be happy to work with Caltrain staff and between the two agents, I'm sure we can respond to it.
Okay. I think that personally, speaking for myself, I think that'd be a nice thing to do. Do you happen to know, Mr. Moore, if there are any considerations being given to alternatives to catenaries? I grew up in an area of the country where they actually have electrified High Speed Rail, but commuter rail, and they don't use catenaries there.
Well, you know, it's interesting, Councilmember Olbert, you asked that question, because when the previous project director, Mr. Doty, was here, he actually had some ideas on, not so much alternatives to catenaries, but different approaches in terms of both the frame and the colors of the wires. He had some, apparently seen some designs in Europe, for example, where it may, according to him, it made it very difficult to even see the structures. And actually, if you note in our letter from 2010, we incorporated some of his comments and said that. But I would imagine that during both the initial discussions we're going to have this summer, and certainly when we get a little further down that planning chart, if in fact electrification moves forward, that would be the point to ask, or reiterate our question. So that's something that could be looked at, yeah.
You know, I, from my own perspective, I think that, that you actually touched on what the goal is, which is to make it as ideally invisible but as least impactful as possible.
Yes.
And alternatives, there might be alternatives for doing that. Sounds like Mr. already had suggested some. Last question I had is, does, does staff maintain a, I guess what I'll call an integrated timeline for project developments along the rail corridor? I mean, we have, there's obviously various discussions about High Speed Rail and electrification, and there's also plans afoot to develop the Transit Village. And it occurred to me the other day that, that I'm not exactly sure sort of the staging and sequencing of these things and how they might overlap and interact, which is admittedly hard to tell when a lot of things are up in the air, but...
True. And I guess the answer to your first question is not as you describe it. However, what we have done during this process, starting in '09, is I have met with both High Speed Rail, Caltrain, and also the staff at JPB that is working on the Transit Village, to make sure that they are, I guess to put it politely, talking with each other. We also noted, or I noted, early on, that the environmental work, both for High Speed Rail and for Transit Village, was actually happening at the same firm with two different planners, one floor apart. So I suggested that maybe they ought to chat from time to time. And actually, I think we have made some good progress with them in terms of, you know, in the upcoming Transit Village EIR, you'll see there'll be, there is a discussion of putting some visuals of how those two projects would play together, assuming that they came together at similar timelines, although at this point, based on the information we got just a few days ago, it appears that unless something radical changes, if the passing tracks aren't happening for a decade and a half, that obviously the Transit Village discussion and, you know, potential even construction is going to happen long before the passing tracks.
Yes, I would certainly agree with that. I guess I wonder myself whether or not the electrification project, you know, that will have a footprint of some kind in town also, presumably less than, than building passing tracks, but...
Yeah. And I guess as far as the... And I guess as far as the electrification, since they haven't even started their environmental document, whereas Transit Village has a draft document, I would imagine, although again, that's the sort of thing, as these things move forward, assuming they do, that we'll certainly have to talk with both groups about the timing. But in, in the discussions I've had recently with Caltrain, JPB staff, they've indicated that they imagine an eight-year timeframe for electrification, and the first couple of years of that would be environmental work. So in theory, it might be the case that the environmental document on Transit Village would be done, and indeed, the construction might be underway and even completed before electrification even started. But you're right, and I hear your point, that as those two start to move, we'll want to obviously coordinate how that all happens, and to the extent that the two of them may touch, they'll need to be coordinated, absolutely.
Other issues aside, what concerns me is the, the worst possible outcome would be to have multiple projects that just happen to one ends and the other starts. And so we end up looking at a decade and a half of construction along the corridor.
Mm-hmm. Agreed.
Thank you.
Mr. Griselli?
Question, the only question I really have is, Mr. Moore, do you know if the dollars that you're quoting in your report there are current dollars?
Actually, those numbers are inflated. They use a 3% per year inflation factor. And then I believe there's an additional nine years thrown in from start to finish on construction length. So they don't really believe that High Speed Rail, it's going to take as long as those time segments show them. And that's the reason that they say that the so-called 79 million, 79 billion dollars, excuse me, and the $98 billion numbers are conservative. But I think the thing to emphasize tonight is that there's, there's, and again, I recognize these are, these are big numbers. There's only, only $9 billion of state funds.
Right.
And $2 to $3 billion of federal funds for all of this stuff. So it would appear, again, from the staff perspective, that once you get past the Central Valley and you get past the bookends, you only have, only a couple billion left. The, the steps two through five are essentially unfunded.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think as, as when some folks talk about, will we, will we see all of this, you know, anytime soon or in our lifetimes or whatever, I think there's still some valid questions about that. However, it does appear there is enough money to do the Central Valley, and there is enough money to do the early investment. And certainly, one of the interesting questions, I think, for the peninsula in the next couple of weeks, is how interested are we in potentially utilizing some of High Speed Rail's money to electrify Caltrain?
Well, and since you brought that up, assuming that the center was built, the bookends were spent, all that money was spent.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be for naught, in theory. I mean, there would be some advantage to that, especially as you mentioned in the Central Valley.
Absolutely. The Central Valley could use that leg to enhance their Amtrak service.
Okay.
In this area, you could electrify Caltrain. And I don't have the specifics about Metro Lake in LA, but you're right, Councilmember Griselli, there's certainly benefit.
Okay. Thank you.
No questions. So moving on to public comment. Thank you, Mr. Moore. We have speaker slips from Elizabeth Wosenski and then Andre Carpio.
Elizabeth Wosenski, San Carlos. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to address this question. I have some comments and then I have some questions. I hope I do live long enough to see High Speed Rail. I have this feeling I won't, but I think if you've ever been overseas anywhere, third-world countries have High Speed Rail. So it's, I think, time to get on board. But I would like to make comments about the modernization of Caltrain. I, I take Caltrain twice a day, and I can tell you that those trains definitely need modernization. We need current signaling, I mean, even getting on the train with the announcement boards that are so out of date and don't function and don't ever provide you with the information you need on, on what train is coming in, if the trains are delayed. So part of the modernization program for Caltrain includes improving the notification to riders. It's very important. And, and the trains break down all the time, so we really do need to move forward. I would like to encourage you, in whatever capacity you have, to, to help make that happen. I do have some questions, though. Are the trains that are going to come in from the Central Valley, those are going to be diesel or those are going to be electric? I'm not really sure, but I thought that leg was going to be diesel.
Ask all of your questions, and then we'll have staff jot those down and then...
Okay.
We'll answer them after we're done with public comment.
Okay. I, I think that's my biggest question right now. Thank you.
Okay. We'll get you an answer. Mr. Carpio?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio. I was not intended to come at this meeting, but it's a happy coincidence. I like to have a definition. I have been involved in movement and dynamism all my life, and all of a sudden I see High Speed Rail. So I'm going to ask you, what is moving? The train or the rail? I mean, there is something there that definition has to be said. If the rail is moving, in what direction? And the train, is it going to be on the ground, on surface, overhead? What is the noise and pollution? Have you taken that into consideration? You know, I don't know. Anybody?
We'll get you an answer, sir. We'll answer your questions after you're done.
Well, if you have a copy, I'd like to hear this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Okay, Mr. Moore, do you want to answer those handful of questions?
Okay. A couple of things. In terms of the construction in the Central Valley and also the Caltrain modernization, both of those systems would be electrified. They would not be diesel. And one of the benefits that we hear from Caltrain about electrification is when you move from a diesel system where you have steel on steel to an electrified system, presumably you'll have much quieter operations in addition to faster operation. So there should be some benefit for both the riders and the neighborhood. And then to answer Mr. Carpio's question, essentially, the system would involve the trains moving at high speed.
Okay. Moving on to council discussion. Does anyone want to start? Mr. Grokot? Do you have anything?
I have things. I don't want to start.
Mr. Olbert, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah. I'm not exactly sure, you know, what the focus of our discussion is going to be, but personally, I'd like to see if there's a consensus around what the council's view of what, you know, ideally, we'd like to see happen in San Carlos as far as High Speed Rail is concerned. And so I'll just throw something out there from, from my own perspective. I frankly would not like to see anything that is going to expand the number of rail lines going through town. And in any way, shape, or form. I guess with the way I might phrase that is, I could understand that HSR, the authority, and Caltrain may want to put passing tracks in, and if they can find a community that would be willing to host those, more power to them. But I personally don't want to see those installed in San Carlos.
Okay. Do you have anything else you'd like to add? And we'll talk about the council viewpoint, but do you have any other discussion points?
There's probably a bunch of other things, but that's, I'm just trying to see if we can get started on, and I, I'm actually just curious what the consensus view of the council is, actually.
Okay. Mr. Griselli, do you have anything?
I have anything.
Mr. Collins?
Well, just to follow up on Councilmember Olbert's comment.
Ron?
You have to talk into your microphone, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Just to follow up on Councilmember Olbert's comment about expanding rail lines in San Carlos, it was a long project to get the, the grade separations done. And I feel the same way that taking those down in light of the fact that we've got Transit Village coming up, there's going to be enough construction for electrification at some point. To me, the, I realize that all the experts say that you can put four tracks in. Part of me says no, but part, part of me just says it's, it's the disruption that I think is going to, would just cause a lot of, I guess, a lot of concern and outcry from the residents. I'm not sure actually that we need four tracks. I have yet to be convinced that there's ever going to be eight or 10 trains an hour. So I'm, I'm not of a mind, at this point, unless somebody convinces me otherwise, that it makes a lot of sense for us to support anything more than a blended system in which San Carlos doesn't have bypass tracks and doesn't have four tracks.
Okay. Mr. Grokot?
Well, one of the reasons I asked a while back to even have this on our agenda and to do a study session was because there was so much going on with this project, I guess you'd say politically, really. And yet, the staff report hits only on the, the details of the phases and the construction and so forth. Doesn't hit, of course, on the political side. But there has been a lot happening in that arena, and I was hoping we would have some discussion on what our thoughts were around that issue. And do we want to continue to be neutral as we've been in just working with Caltrain and, and High Speed Rail through their EIR process and so forth? Or do we want to speak up and, and say something about how we think about this project as a council? That's why I asked the question about the funding. I didn't want to, I brought some material here that, that says what the funding is, but some of it is, you know, just, is from folks writing letters to the editor. I wasn't sure how accurate it was necessarily. But I believe it talked about, about a $39 billion project originally. And then the, the funding that was to come from 1A was about 9.8 of that money. And the rest was to come from investment, private investment, and from federal funds. And while there's been question about what, how much of the federal funds will come forward, there's been no interest in private funding, which in my mind says something. So I was hoping we would talk about that. And I was hoping we'd also talk about the issue that Mr. Olbert brought up about two tracks or, or four, and how we feel about that. And then thirdly, I would like us to talk about possibly joining one of the groups that meets and talks about the issue of High Speed Rail, like the Peninsula Consortium or one of those. Because I, I think it's important to know what our neighbors are thinking. This project, one way or the other, is going to affect Redwood City. It's going to, going to affect Belmont, San Mateo, all, all up the line. And if we don't know what other cities are thinking and doing, I think it puts us at a disadvantage. So that was the other thing I was hoping we'd have some discussion about.
Okay. So I'll just chime in. So from what I'm hearing from a couple of council members is, you want to have viewpoints on how we feel about multiple tracks. I'm not going to say that I'm not open to a passing track or four tracks, because we really haven't been presented with what that looks like. And if that's what it takes to make the project happen, I'm, I'm not going to be a NIMBYist and say, well, it's great if it happens in San Mateo, but not in San Carlos. We don't know if it's going to happen here, but I'm not going to put my foot in the ground and say, no, you can't do that. Every great infrastructure project that's ever happened in the United States has been called a boondoggle, or has had people who said, don't do it, it'll never work. And they tend to work out. But I just don't know enough about High Speed Rail to dig my feet into the ground. So I'd like to remain neutral. I think the way this is working out is good for San Carlos. It's the same thing we did with the passing, or with the grade separation. We didn't, we weren't anti-it. We, we went along, and we got a great grade separation out of it. High Speed Rail may never happen, but if it does happen, I think we still continue to work with the High Speed Rail authority to make sure that it benefits San Carlos as is leastly impactful as possible. But I'm not going to say that you can't have a passing track in our town, or you can't expend to, expand to more rails. Because all we're saying is, well, it, you know, while that obviously needs to happen, it's not welcome here, it's just welcome somewhere else. And I'm not going to be that type of council member. So I disagree with all the comments so far. But Mr. Grokot wants some more information. So Mr. Olbert and Mr. Griselli?
Well, I, I'll start with the second part first, Councilman Grokot, if you don't mind, of the second part of your thing. The peninsula, and I was the mayor when, when they started a couple of these, and they asked me to join. And I could sort of read the tea leaves right off the get-go that it wasn't so much a discussion as it was there against it because of a number of items. We're fortunate that we have our grade separations. Atherton, Menlo Park, Palo Alto, Belmont, Burlingame, Brisbane don't have any. Brisbane doesn't, I don't think, need any, but the other ones don't have any. And in that group, I, I, from what I've listened to and read, it's, it's basically no. And I haven't heard a lot of ways that they come up with ideas to make it happen. On the rail corridor partnership, if, if the cost to participate, as in our staff report says, $150,000 to $200,000, this, as I look at it now, is, is a drawing. And as Mr. Moore said, basically, within a year or two, it could still be a drawing on a lot of this stuff. And to have $150,000 go out of our, our, our treasury to this, that's awful hard for me to, to, to look at when these are so much concept situations. So I'm not necessarily in favor of joining either one of these groups. Not saying that we shouldn't pay attention to what they do and perhaps visit either one as, as you might say in a class, audit the, what's going on. I think that's important. We have to keep up. I don't want to put our heads in the sand on any of this. But this is just, for me, this whole concept of High Speed Rail is so out there. I mean, as mentioned by Mr. Moore, we have nine to $10 billion possibly identified. And if it costs $98 billion, that money has to come from somewhere. And you mentioned that. If there's no private investment, this doesn't go. It isn't going to happen, not even close. You, if you don't have any private, even when they started it, I think your numbers were fairly close, actually, I believe, as I remember, that it was about $39 to $40 billion. But only 10 was identified. And you figure the federal government might kick in, say the same, 10. Where's the other 20? And I agree that no, that I haven't read any private folks stepping up. And if they don't step up, none of this happens. I just hate to spend an inordinate amount of time on some of this that may never occur. Again, having said that, we have to pay attention to what is going on, but to actually say, we don't want this, or we don't want that, I, I, just as, as the mayor said, I, I kind of like to sit back and see. We already have a really great situation. We're in a catbird seat. Now, if someone wants to tear those down and give me the money to, to put them up again, or some other way, I'm all for it. But short of that, we, we have a great situation. So I'm a little bit more of the, let's, let's monitor this, keep looking at it, as many reports as we can get. But I'm not necessarily a matter of joining or putting our foot in the, in the ground or our line in the sand rather relative to what we do or do not want, or should I say do not want? I certainly anticipate that we want to tell them what we want, but not necessarily what we don't want.
Mr. Olbert?
Yeah. Actually, I just had one sort of clarifying question that I wanted to ask Councilmember Grokot. I think I heard Councilmember Collins and myself talk about how we were not in favor of an expansion of the number of lines through town. And I just, I wasn't quite clear where you had come down on that. I know it was only one of the items that you, you were talking about.
Well, when I was at the meeting at the Samtrans Building the other day, the other evening, and Seaman, is his name?
Seamus.
Seamus, sorry.
Yeah.
When Seamus was giving his presentation, I was heartened by the idea that we might be able to limit the project to two tracks. And what I was hearing through that was, our grade separation would be fine, which you're right. I think Mr. Collins said, you know, that was a long project for San Carlos. It, you know, anytime you do a project of that measure, there's a, a lot of pain and suffering that goes on in the community to put up with the construction. So hearing that it could be two tracks and our grade separations would be perfectly fine for running High Speed Rail, that's the first I've, I'd ever heard that. Before, I was always hearing that, well, we'd have to tear down our grade separations, raise them five, 10 feet because of the extra width means you have to get up above the roadway, and unless you want to dig your roadway down and so forth, you know, all these complications. So when I heard that about the two tracks, I was very heartened. Then, what I heard from Mr. Moore tonight was, well, Caltrain is going to address that issue later. And really, what Caltrain is saying there is, they're not going to address it, they're going to hear from High Speed Rail and they'll let us know what High Speed Rail has told them. But, and I think that because what I was hearing from, from the Caltrain staff is, they also would like to see a two-track system run up and down the peninsula with this shared service model, if you will. And if there's going to be passing tracks, what I was hearing from them is, it, it would be much better and much less painful to our communities if that could happen either closer to the city, to San Francisco, or further to the south down in the Mountain View area. And I don't, I don't know what Mountain View thinks about that, but, you know, I, I do feel like we need to take a stand. I think we need to take a stand for our community and say, you know, we've been through this I think we need to take a stand for our community and say, you know, we've been through this once before, we don't want to go through it again, and if you, you know, we're, we're in favor of Caltrain electrification, so we're on board for that. But as regards high-speed rail, we're, we're in favor with our representatives in Sacramento, because Jerry Hill's talked about this, Joe Smidion's talked about this, and before that, when he was in the Assembly, Iowa Ruskin talked about it, and they all seem to be in favor of what these folks came up with, being this, this blended system. And let's get on board with that and say, yeah, we want two tracks, or, you know, we'll accept two tracks, but we're not going to be looked at as the place to put a four-track or even a three-track passing system. So that's how I feel about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, so we have three council members for you taking notes, Mr. Moore, who are in favor of putting their foot down and saying no more than two tracks in San Carlos.
Yeah, let me, let me add a couple things before I forget. First of all, as I was speaking, two folks came to the room, which are significant to note, one is Marion Lee, who's the acting director of the Caltrain Modernization and Blended Operations Project, and so if you're interested in hearing from Marion, she's here. And also, we have a representative from, one of the consultants to high-speed rail from the state who also is here. A couple other things I wanted to mention. First of all, in your packet, we do have the letter we sent in January where we said that San Carlos would prefer two tracks to four. I think if the council wants to take a stronger position than that, you can. You'll note in your packet, we also do have the Mountain View letter, which says that they would prefer not having the passing tracks, and I think in the discussions that I've heard since we sent our letter in January, and again, we've only heard from three of the cities, the other cities have yet to send letters, the prevailing thought so far is I don't think anybody's interested in the passing tracks at this point, which I don't think's terribly surprising. And I guess to clarify some of the comments, I heard about two tracks versus three or four, you know, we said to you in January that the, the blended system talks about two tracks and the potential for three or four, but at this point, there's no decision from Caltrain whether passing tracks will ever happen or not. A lot of that, as we talked about in January, revolves around the question of how many trains per hour do you need for the two systems, and that assumes, of course, that high-speed rail ever gets here. And as you saw earlier from the discussion that we had, since only step, one of the five steps is funded, it could take many years, at least 15, for high-speed rail to get here.
Mr. Moore, I don't want to cut you off, I think we understand what you're saying, but without being said, there's three council members, Albert, Collins, and Grokot, who have all specified that they do not want to see anything more than two tracks in San Carlos, so we have to go with the majority of the council. Is there anything else, Mr. Albert or Mr. Collins?
Mr. Grokot wanted to weigh in on the politics of it, and what was the other thing? There were three things.
Well, the, whether or not we want to...
Join one of the groups.
Join one of the groups. I suppose one of the other ways is to, we wouldn't have any say, but to have one of us, at least on occasion, go and monitor what's going on at some of these groups, I think we'd be welcome to sit in.
Well, you're free, you're free to do that with, without direction from the council, since we won't be giving you marching orders, you're free to go to whatever groups you want, if that's what you're saying. But you were talking about joining groups formally. Informally, you can go to any meetings you choose, but representing the council will be a more formal thing, and so far, you have two that have said no, so we need to hear from Mr. Collins and Mr. Albert.
I just want to clarify, I, I am a big supporter of commuter rail, I think the high-speed rail is a great idea. I, I don't want to be seen as against the concept of high-speed rail, but the, to me, the issue is, you've got a massive project that may never be funded, at least in my lifetime, and I'm more of a mind that I'd like to do, I'd like to take advantage of the resources that we can actually tangibly see in the future and maximize whatever those resources are, and specifically electrifying Cal, Caltrain, building the remaining grade separations that need to be, to be built. Those are of more immediate concern, so it's, it's, it's not that unnecessarily for putting our foot down, although I, I, I don't believe it's in San Carlos's best interest to continue to support a three or a four-track system when it's so far in the future. Maybe it's something that future councils can, can, can consider down the line, but since this project has such a long timeframe and a quite uncertain revenue stream, I, that's, that's really why I feel that we really ought to be firm on our, our feeling that we want the blended system that remains the, the two-track system now. But I do support the, all, the entire concept of high-speed rail, and particularly electrification of, and modernization of the entire Caltrain system.
Mr. Collins, we're going to need a clarification, because you said something five minutes ago, and now you're, it's a little less unclear. We're giving staff direction on kind of how the council feels, and you were one of three who said in your comments that you believe it should only be two rails in San Carlos. Are you sticking with that, or are you saying?
I'm sticking with that.
Okay, good. So then the direction was right. And the other question is, do you feel that we should join one of these groups formally, and whether or not we should weigh in on the politics?
I don't think there's really any point to joining these groups formally. I, I agree with Mr. Grokot. We go, we monitor, we, we get information that we think is useful to us. I don't know about the political side of it, we'd have to, I'd have to know more.
Okay, Mr. Albert?
I was just going to say that, to me, whether we, you know, one of the things I'd like to hear about before we decide whether we're going to join one of these groups or not, is since the council has made clear its, its perspective here, if staff comes back and says that putting that perspective into practice is best served by joining one or more of these groups, then I'd be happy to entertain it. But I don't think that's a decision we need to make right now, one way or another. And I just wanted to also add that, that I too think that improving infrastructure is a smart thing to do. I think there are smarter ways to do this, I don't pretend to understand exactly what they are, but I take great heart from the fact that the concept of the blended option actually arose because of initial resistance to building a four-track system throughout the peninsula, and so quite possibly, there will be another solution that will work for everybody's needs.
Okay, so it seems like we only have support for one of the three, so I think we're kind of done. Are there any last comments? Mr. Grokot, do you have anything?
We don't have, have a time, so...
Okay, well, I guess my last comment, sorry. I think it should be said, decades ago, Bart attempted to come into San Mateo County, down to San Mateo, and it was blocked, it was blocked by a lot of cities, and it was blocked by a very wealthy lobbyist, and I think we're all kicking ourselves now because Bart is not here. So we just need to remember that while taking a stand right now is great, sometimes we, we do it in spite of future generations. So with that, I'm going to adjourn this special council meeting, and we will re-adjourn in about five minutes.